I don't get to say that. You gotta play security guard.
You're the security guard. I'm the security at my church. Oh, you couldn't give me the cushion one, huh? No, no, I'm only, I'm only, I'm only.
Okay. Thank y'all for all coming out tonight. This is our work session that we're just discussing a few things and it's the same as our agenda tomorrow. So I have that if anybody needs one. We'll start out by just looking at, I guess on the presentation, we was gonna let Pat, Mr. Pat Landreth, talk about citations, driving school. You wanna introduce yourself, like if you come to the podium, introduce yourself and let the...
I appreciate y'all giving me just a few minutes and I'm not gonna take too much time 'cause I know y'all got a big, long agenda to work on, but I brought a little something for each of you to look at. The purpose of me being here tonight is to ask you, just a little bit of information, is to ask y'all to consider influencing, instructing, however you wanna call it, Judge Ken Seaton, city judge, need to send people to driving school. We, Alderman John Tennyson was on the city council sixteen, seventeen years ago when they passed a motion to have driving school for the city of Selmer. And to my knowledge, Judge Seaton, and I'm saying, and hey, let me make sure, I'm not after Judge Seaton. I'm trying to make our community better. And so, but to my knowledge, Judge Seaton hadn't sent anybody to driving school. I just don't think he sees it. Think he's a good judge, but he just doesn't see what we're doing. People that come to our driving school, when they walk out of there, most of them will walk up to us and thank us for what we just did because they get something from our class. Everybody here probably didn't have a good, a good person, a well-trained person teaching them to drive. It's probably a family member, mother, father, or something like that. Some of them had, some of you had a coach, a good, a football coach at high school that taught you something about driving, really good at football, but not necessarily good at teaching people how to drive. My partner Greg Baldwin and myself, we've been doing highway safety for over forty years. Me forty-two. It's all I've done in my whole, in my entire career is work on highway safety. Me and Tom O'Neil worked together at Henco. All I did was handle the safety part of that fleet. And it's my passion to help people drive safer. If you don't get cancer, if you die early, you're probably gonna die on our highway out here. The only thing that's more consistent in our county paper than the obituaries is accidents. And I brought news clippings, if any of you wanted to take the time to see them. Every week on the front page, there's an accident and if it's not, there's a report from Chief Holly of how many accidents they worked and how many citations they wrote. The good thing that we're offering is how to make people a better driver. And here's the most, here's the greatest thing for this city council. It doesn't cost the city a dime, not a penny. All you gotta do is have the judge tell them we want them to go to driving school. They can still charge whatever they charge in the courtroom. We're gonna charge a fee for what we do and we're gonna take part of our fee and give it back to the city. That was the original agreement with the city of Selmer sixteen, seventeen years ago. Those notes from the city council are in the handout that I just gave you. The state of Tennessee passed a law last year that requires every license holder in the state of Tennessee to have the right to go to driving school and get points off their license. The, the law says that they have, they, they have to be given an opportunity to go to driving school at least once every three years and get points off their license. When y'all get too many points on your license, you're gonna get a love letter from the state of Tennessee. It's gonna say, "We're fixing to suspend your license." You get a few more points than they will, they'll suspend your license or revoke them. And by going to driving school, it can help reduce the number of points on their license. And I promise you, our class is not just a bunch of, it's one video. We do have a video, but it is a four-hour class. We've been certified by the Tennessee Department of Safety to be able to teach this class. And mine and Greg Baldwin's heart is in what we do. I, I have offered to pay Judge Seaton's hourly rate, whatever it is. I'll pay you to come sit through the class 'cause I believe, once he saw what we did, he would readily send people to the class. And I don't know, Chief Holly, we got a hundred and fifty to three hundred citations a month on average, something like that in that neighborhood. Well, it's the city, that's what county paper says when they send out y'all's notes. And there are part of those people that probably don't need to go to driving school, but I promise you, there's twenty or thirty every month that ought to be in our class. They're repeat violators, they've had bad, really serious violations, or they've had accidents and they need to be in our class. They will learn something. And there's a chance we can make them a better driver. But if they don't ever go to class, they're never gonna get better. Nobody's gonna teach them. So this is an opportunity to win, win, win. The city will win, the person coming to class will win, the community will win by reducing violations and accidents. But you gotta get them to driving school. And so, it's not much revenue that we're gonna add to the city, but it's a little bit. And again, it doesn't cost you a thing. You just gotta influence or tell Judge Seaton, "This is what you want done." I've gone to him myself and asked him to do it. He doesn't seem to wanna listen to me and I don't know anything else to do except come before y'all and ask y'all to take some action to tell him this is what the city wants done.
Pat, can you recollect how many you get from Judge Webb back in the day on a monthly basis?
We didn't get a lot. We didn't get a lot from Judge Webb. Me and Judge Webb are pretty good friends. He was my high school sponsor and we didn't get a whole lot from him either. We didn't. Judge McManahan, our general sessions judge, McNairy County, we get between twenty-five and fifty people a month out of his courtroom. Now, we're getting more people from this letter that the state is sending now to people who have had violations. But I don't know, the city just doesn't see the benefit of it. Or let me say, just the judge, he just, just doesn't see it. It's an opportunity to make these people better drivers and to make our, our streets a little safer. And it's just, to me, to me, it's a no-brainer. You just gotta, you just gotta influence our judge to, "Hey, this is what we want done." I'd be happy to field questions, but other than that, I've given y'all our notes, you know, to show where the city approved this some time ago, where the state's approved us, example of the certificate that we use when they come out of class. Got my business card here. Cell phone number is on that business card from me and my partner Greg Baldwin. Will take your call any time of the day or night. And all we have to do is say, tell the judge, the judge has to tell them, sign up for driving school. And we'll provide information either in this courtroom or next door in the office where they can call us and we'll set up, we'll do the rest. We'll handle everything else. That's all you gotta do. I brought my programs on my laptop. I know y'all don't have time for that, but, and Alderman Alvin Norris offered to come to my class this past Monday night and then he had a conflict. We invite y'all to come. I promise you, if you ever sit through it, you'll see how good the class is and how, how people can benefit from it. We let people come for free. You got a fifteen, sixteen-year-old fixing to start driving. We got people that send their kids up there because we don't charge them a dime. You come for a violation and we're gonna, you're gonna have to pay for the class. It's a fifty-dollar, fifty-dollar fee to go to class. And we're sending back fifteen dollars of that fee back to the city of Selmer.
Thank you.
So that's all I got. If somebody's got questions.
Y'all have any questions?
I'm just hoping y'all...
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. I hope that you'll just go to, go to your judge and get him to send some people to the class. And y'all are welcome to come. Next class is a week from Saturday, eight-thirty in the general sessions courtroom at the Justice Center. Thank y'all.
All right. Next up, we'll talk about the budget discussion. Do y'all have anything, when y'all looked through the budget, did you have any questions or anything on the budget? Did you discuss anything? Did we wanna talk about the raises? I know we had some aldermen that proposed raises through property tax. Do you wanna talk about that? I think that was you, Mr. Austin. Do you wanna break that?
I know we've discussed for a couple of years on how to find a way to give raises to employees. My budget doesn't have anything in there.
Right.
My budget doesn't. So I didn't know if you wanted to look at anything where we could give the employees raises.
I understand that.
Money has to come from somewhere.
Exactly. So you proposed, do you wanna talk about what you were just proposing? I understand, but you wanna talk about...
Yeah, I did, I did a ten percent 'cause it's easy to look at money that way.
Ten percent raise across the board?
That was across the board. That makes money easier to look at 'cause ten percent's easy to calculate in my head. So, somewhere in there.
That's okay.
But I think the employees deserve a raise, but something more than, more than one, two percent of what is written in, so need to find a way to do that. I didn't get much feedback on that, so...
No, I was just bringing it to the table. What did others think about that? Do you all have any thoughts on it?
Like on the police department, didn't we just give them a pretty good raise two years ago?
Big more for...
Well, yeah, I know that.
Across the board. I mean, we're not, if we're paying fourteen dollars an hour and you can go to, you know, anywhere and make more.
Right.
You know, it's, we're not competitive. I know Raymond has problems hiring people. Everybody has, the police department still has problems hiring people. It's not necessarily always a money issue, but money doesn't hurt.
Right.
I know Raymond proposed in, in his packet that, you know, he's just kinda pulling some numbers around, just basically asking, you know, if he could do the two percent on, on some. And then some of them do multiple jobs, like, you know, I, and I'm not good with all the equipment stuff, but you know, like a backhoe and you got the dump truck and you got different things that have to have city license. And so, you know, he was going down through there seeing who he could just give like an extra twenty-five cents or, you know, maybe fifteen cents, twenty cents added to...
I mean, the employees that know how to do want to get paid more.
Yep, that's exactly what he was saying.
If all you know how to do is run a shovel, you need to get paid shovel money. If you know how to run everything on Raymond's hill, you should get paid more.
Right. And that's what Ray was proposing in his, you know, trying to do in his budget, wanting to just do two percent if that's what, you know, y'all decide. And then they were gonna do like a, like an extra little bit of raise, twenty-five to fifteen cents, twenty-five cents or forty cents on the sum because they can do multiple jobs or sometimes four jobs. Been here longer and, and since we went up, it did push some of them up to where you would come in now. If I came in and I was gonna be on raise team, then I would be making almost as much as the ones that's been there for many years.
Well, I'm glad we did finally wake up and see that people needed a raise two years ago when you talked about it. And we bring it up every time, but it seems like it hasn't left us, so, you know, it ain't happened. But we knew it happened. Appreciate you stepping up and taking care of that.
We need to figure out something in the budget and how to pay for it across the board, so...
So is that something that y'all wanna, you know, think about on the table? I know this is just talk today and all that happens, but that's, was one thing you had on, had on there and everybody else is concerned about, of course. Phelanston, do you have anything on that?
Do you have any kind of plan on what to do?
Not, I was just looking at your numbers and trying to evaluate. I was thinking about the valuation and merit raises is what I was going with, but I don't really...
That would be fine.
And that is what I was kinda thinking. I'm just saying, you know, what incentive do we get from somebody that, you know, is doing three or four jobs or maybe doing multiple things and then you've got one person that, you know, is just, you know how that works?
Fit that across all the departments or, there has to be a starting dollar... You know, a certain percentage that we go across and then if Raymond wants to distribute that however he wants to or cheap car, you know, one, one employee might get more than one get a little bit less depending on what they know how to do, but, but you don't have a figure on it.
Uh, I didn't, I was just, that's why I wanted to raise it, raise it up in front of all y'all and let y'all talk about it hopefully out loud, 'cause I need y'all's help to figure that out. So what do y'all think? I mean, just, I know he's probably figured...
Well, you, the issue is where's the revenue gonna come from? Yes, we need raises. I'd like to pay them more and I'm good with that, but we hadn't had a, and taxes is our biggest thing. Two thousand and four was the last time there's been that. And if anybody can tell me where they can go buy stuff the same price it was in two thousand and four, let me know and we'll all go buy. So, I mean, that's our biggest generator of revenues is the property taxes. And, you know, it's gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to raise, but we need to show that raising property taxes and increasing the revenue that we're gonna stream it into, increasing people's salaries, bettering things in the town with that money and not just, you know, letting it set aside, making it work, so...
Yeah, I think if you're clear with what you're doing and no crooked stuff, everybody else can digest it.
I know, we'll go back to Alderman Austin. He did say an adjustment of the property taxes to roughly point eighty. And you was just kinda trying to get, going off of your ten percent, I understand. And that's less than previous rate. And I know that you were going off of, weren't you going off of...
The rate when the assessments went up.
Right. But you were going off of twenty-twenty-one tax rate, is that correct?
I think so.
Okay. So that's what I was kinda just trying to, you know, hopefully work together to try to come up with a good figure. And I do agree that we can't keep going forward in our town incre, you know, we can only go so far, as you can see, this is where we're at, the stopping point of we, you know, can't just keep spending money and going, making our town look like it needs to look. Um, so what about if you look at, um, just the thought now, just trying to throw some thoughts at your idle money, you know, your funds, and that's where I'll ask Angie, where Angie's at, way back there in the bank. Uh, you know, like money that's in the bank, you know, just kinda like idle money. John, you're good at banking, so what is your thoughts on something like that?
First of all, it's public funds and they're handled differently than individual funds.
I understand that.
So far as trying to invest it, you know, it's not gonna be...
To get a better...
We don't have a lot to do, a long-term investment to generate a lot of revenue right now.
So that's something that just totally is off the table. I was just looking at the...
I mean, you should generate, I mean, you're not gonna generate enough in interest earnings really to take a big chunk out of the budget.
I was just thinking, you know, some money that you put over and, and, and the fund balance and Angie can help you with that if she wants to chime in. Uh, just you gain five percent, four percent. I, I'm not really sure. I haven't been able to invest any money, I haven't had any to invest in a while. But what would you say would be the going rate now at a bank?
It's different everywhere depending on what bank needs the money and what bank don't.
Okay. Well, I'm learning, so that's why I was asking.
Angie, you may not know this answer now. If we went that route, how much would that affect everything? What percent would you be talking about?
What are you talking about?
Sam, what are you guys...
If you're talking about what?
If you raise stuff like that.
You're talking about property taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Well, when, when John had put that email out to the alderman and to the mayor, um, his proposal, I went, I had put together a budget for that proposal just because I knew, okay, here's, we're gonna, if it's gonna come up, I'm not gonna get caught without information. So we have the, we've got the budget that the mayor put in the paper and then I have, I've put together a, a different one using his numbers. And the only thing that changed were the salaries and the, the property tax. And so, I mean, it, I'm not sure what, what you're asking, but it, but using his numbers, what he said does actually work. I mean, that's, uh, he had done his numbers correctly. It's just with the, uh, his math was correct. And so, if you, if you do the, um, if you do a budget where you do the property tax increase that he suggested, then that generates more than enough. It is, uh, it's about, I don't know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars more than what you would need for the salary increases. So yes, that, that math works, um, if that's something. And, and I think one of the things that might be a concern is, is the, on the bottom line, you know, where it's showing the, um, it looks like we're budgeting significantly more expenditures than we are revenue. And I understand that that's what it looks like, but if you look, it's a timing thing because of our, all of the ARPA funds that we have received this year that we have not spent. So, um, when you look at the twenty-twenty-three, there is a significant surplus, but it's because of revenues that you have received and have not spent. Um, and so those revenues will be spent in, um, twenty-twenty-four when we do the other things that we're planning. Um, and so the net difference is, is, is basically flat. Um, and so doing, with, with that, with that tax increase. Uh, and so we can, you can do the tax increase and the salary increase that he suggested and it, and it work. And if y'all wanna see it, I, you know, I've got the copies, so, um, but that's just, again, that was just a, me. All I, all I did was take the, the version of this, of the budget that was put in the paper and change, the only thing I changed was property tax and salaries. So, I mean...
And that was five percent?
What, raises?
Yeah, no.
It was ten percent.
No, the property tax.
It went up to what he said, the point eight?
Point eight.
Point eight, it's like one-sixty-one, man.
Which is less than what it was before.
Mm-hmm. So a thousand dollars for someone, that would, that generate a person, have to pay a thousand dollars. How much more?
Um, it generate for the city or for the...
For the person.
Individual.
Oh, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't, I don't know.
Kinda have a ballpark figure of what, okay, you owe a thousand dollars this year. It's gonna be twelve-hundred next year or where they can kinda know about what it's gonna be.
Property tax rate.
It's like it went up fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, is that correct?
Eleven percent increase generates about a hundred grand.
One, one cent gets, a penny gets one.
Thirteen thirty, thirteen eighty, something like that. It was thirteen...
I use ten percent on the raises just 'cause it makes the math easier. They could be five percent raises this year 'cause we're gonna have to, we, if we just plan on adjusting property taxes one time, we're gonna have room to increase salaries alone instead of doing it all at one, one lump.
You don't wanna get to where you're continuing to give raises for the employees and then all of a sudden the revenue's going down. You're gonna, if we do the property tax, you're gonna go ahead and set it up here where it'll be several years...
Work for another, another twenty years while it has to be adjusted.
I understand that. I just don't want no fuzzy now. Want it to be where it's clear, where people know, "Hey, I'm gonna pay twelve-hundred versus a thousand." Make sure I may pay thirteen-hundred.
Yeah. And I would have to give it to Angie. I'm sure she's got those calculations in there. I don't, I don't have that. I've got what the state provides where you, you key in a tax rate. Um, the Palm Trunkers website has a, a thing where you key in a tax rate and it shows how much revenue that it generates per cent or, you know, however much you put in. So that I have. As far as the other side, I would have to, I'd have to give it to Angie and give her to see it.
I just want clear transparency on, for people to know what to expect versus surprises.
Excuse me. It, it, I think the majority of the people will go along with this if it's explained to them.
Right.
We don't, we're gonna do a ten percent raise and not explain everything like the real tax several years ago.
We don't want it to turn into that. That's been discussed.
That's what I'm trying to make sure we're doing.
All of a sudden we're having real tax, oh, we're gonna do seventy-five dollars.
They're gonna pay more taxes, but, you know, the people that work for Ray, you know, that, and Chief Kim, we talked about this a while back, that he trained police officers and then he goes to Hart County. That's ridiculous. We need to give his people more incentive to stay here.
Yeah. And that, and that's what we're trying to do. We, we don't give them a raise, we're not going anybody working.
We're developing big city problems here in Selmer and, uh, people need to know that we need big city protection and services with the fire, everything. But we need to explain clearly where it's going and, I mean, I don't like it, but they'll understand it, so I would.
If it's clear.
That sounds good.
And that was overall planning, we've gotta be able to retain employees, but we've gotta get the revenue from somewhere.
I'm just ready, but he had an end...
Nobody wants their property taxes to go up, but at the same time, you want a policeman and you want your garbage picked up.
Right.
That's correct.
If y'all, I mean, we've got this, I've got this, everything of my stuff is set up so that if, if y'all want, um, to, if y'all want a number to be plugged, that can be put in there tomorrow night. You know, it's there, it's just a matter of me swapping a number. So, um, if, if, if y'all come up with some type of, an idea of what you want me to put in there tonight, we'll have it for tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I know our city limits are fairly small. Is there any way we can expand our city limits? Would that cost a lot of money for us to expand?
You gotta offer the sewer and that's the big kicker. And it's how much am I, it's, I mean...
I'm not sure it's... But didn't they do something with the annexation recently?
They did, you can annex no more.
Did they, I thought that was lifted. Did it put it back on the books or...
Yeah, it's made a couple of books.
That's great of you, Sam. Thank you for that.
Just, I, I just wanna let you all know. I've got two that was working full-time. They went back to part-time and I've got a feeling I'm gonna lose them. One of them has went to Olive Bryant's, sixty-two thousand dollars a year. I've got another one that's going to Oxford, Air and Highway Works. He goes there and pulls a forty-eight hour shift. He's home for five days when he completes his DMT in about two weeks, seventy-two thousand dollars a year. They're doing the same thing at Highway Trouble, but they're getting salaries up. I've got Julie, she's going to lobotomy school when she completes it in September. We don't get way up, I lose her because she can go over here in Hardin County, start out at twenty-four bucks an hour. It's, it's just, it's, it's gonna be a massive exit on people. And you just can't, this younger generation, just can't get them in and get them interested, get them through first responder school, which is Penley. Well, Penley's not working for me. He's on analyst. He's working full-time, seven days a week. He can make more money in two days on that analyst than he can make here in two weeks and he's been here twenty years.
Well, thank y'all for bringing all this up. This is good, good stuff to talk about. Anything else on the budget? That's, that's very well, I only two things about.
Well, let me ask Chief Holly. Okay, when we hire a new officer...
Yes.
We send them to get certified.
Yes.
And we pay for it.
Right now, the training is free, but we have to pay them while they're there.
Is, is there not any way, I mean, I don't wanna keep sending them to get certified and as soon as they do, they jump off somewhere else. Is there, can we not ask them to sign, you know, a two-year, three-year contract?
I'm making them sign a four-year contract, but...
Oh, really?
But then they come back and pay the contract off. 'Cause can't make them pay the salary back. I make, I make them pay off the money we had in the expense of the training.
Okay.
That's what we did last year. The young lady came back, stayed six, I said, missed eight, six months, which you paid the contract out.
Okay. I, I, I didn't know...
And, and right now, the training's free, so still get them to sign the contract. Still says the same thing. I don't know. State ain't charging them nothing to send them up there. The reason it's hard to get them in school, 'cause everybody's sending them.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else on that? Hopefully the next thing on there was, uh, anything with the budget anymore. I'm sorry. Anything else? Vote on the storm shelter, just kinda get, you know, need to get that...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Vote on the storm shelter at Selmer Elementary, but I'm... Vote on the storm shelter at Selmer Elementary, but I know we can't vote, but anyway, uh, what is your thoughts on that? Hire a person to open and police. What is y'all's thoughts on this? I, I know this has been on the table, and it's been off, so.
One of the issues, something about pets, wasn't it? I can't remember.
Sherry, uh, and we had the big bus wreck, I had to take all the medical forms, Greg, you know, Sam, because they're responsible for the juveniles, and he asked how the storm shelter was coming. And I told him that was a lot of questions, but animals was one thing, and he said, no. And I told him what they was doing in Ripley, and he wanted me to go up and try to get their contract, and let them and the school board look at it. I won't say right now, till I can get a chance to go to Ripley and look at what they've done, bring them a contract back and let the school board, we may just be spinning their wheels, but he said flat definitely no. No animals in cages, nothing.
Okay, okay, well, um.
Move that on till you can get that.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Guess so.
Just move it to the next month till you can get that, yeah.
Okay. Next is, uh, we talked about Florence Avenue on the road strips, are those, um, they're called, what do you call those, Ray? Where you at?
Speed tables.
We go?
Speed tables.
Speed tables, are y'all, uh, wanting to go ahead and make a decision on that, Billson?
I think it'd be smart to, I mean, we know that, that the kids have got across the road, and
Right.
we've done the best we could with signs and putting that up to get people to slow down through there. I mean, there's other towns it's got it, Lexington's got it going to their baseball and softball fields right through the neighborhood, and they're like that wide.
What they can do with the speed table?
Speed tables, uh, designed like a speed bump, speed bump is only a small bump. A speed table is approximately, it's not such a jarring, um, for your vehicle or your.
Ladder?
Yeah, it's three foot wide, inch, roughly an inch, inch and a half high, and you kinda level out and then go back down. So it forces, the only thing on a speed table, or a speed bump, whatever we decide to do, um, it's gotta clear both lanes of the road, because what we're gonna get is, um, a situation where they're coming down the right side of the road, going around the speed bumper, speed table. Um, and then, so, we wanna make it so both of them
Yeah.
go directly across the road.
That's the way they are at Lexington.
They call it speed humps, though.
Yeah, they call them speed humps.
They call it speed humps. Slow down. Okay.
They hit that path, that, that, y'all.
Yeah. It's, it's not as bad as a speed bump, where you hit it and descend right, right at the same moment. Um, but they'll slow you down, there's no question about that.
They don't want that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that? So that's what we'll, all right, on the planning committee, what is your thoughts on that? Did y'all get your email from Southwest?
Just back to the.
Email from South, oh, I'm sorry, Ray.
Back to the speed table.
Oh, yes, okay.
My plan is to do it at both stop signs, not at the crosswalk. That way, they have to stop in order to go over the, just kinda like Clay Hill, uh, Higginbottom, right there, right at the stop sign. So that, which forces them to stop at the stop sign.
Okay, is that, okay. Back to the planning committee, um, did you get your emails on from Southwest on that? For Havoc Planning Committee, we need somebody that comes to those meetings, that is experienced, and, and not that, Brandon is not. He's, he's doing well with his education and, and training, and, and conversing with other building inspectors, and, and, and doing all that he needs to do to learn. Um, but to, to actually come in and, um, do the planning committee, uh, board, we need somebody that is, uh, in that position, that is educated, just like, you know, when we had that planning committee meeting, Alderman Norris, he were in there with Jim, and he told you all about, you know, what that consensus of, so you kinda got a better understanding of that. So what is your thoughts on that?
How much was Southwest?
Uh, Southwest, uh, was, uh, ten-five, I believe. But, and then Jim's was ninety-six, I believe. And and we don't have to make that decision to, to tomorrow or anything, I mean, they can come speak with y'all if you want them to.
I mean, what did, I mean, what?
I thought Jim was ninety-two, did he go up?
Oh, I, I don't know, I just, y'all have that.
I thought he was ninety-two.
Okay, yeah, I probably got it. Ninety-two, yeah, but ninety-six, damn.
My question would be, um, which one would give us more benefit, I mean?
Well, Southwest, and, and, you know, if you got that brochure, if you got everything that they sent you, uh, they gave you, you know, the, well, let me just say, they helped with movement and moving, um, Mayor Matisse's over at Bolivar, you know, forward, they help with all kinds of, uh, one-on-one relation, regional planning. Uh, they do, uh, helps with grants, uh, it's, it's all right here.
That's not with the, that's not this, I mean, I know.
Yeah, they'll come.
Does all that other stuff.
Oh, I understand, but yeah, they'll be able to help, that, you know, he'll be right in on everything. He'll, he'll tell us what our town needs, if they, you know, need to look at the, uh, growth, systemic planning, all this, yes. He, he, he talks about that when they came and talked with me and Brandon, correct, Brandon? Yeah, that's, that's what he was talking about, I mean, he, he'll be a great asset to it, but the pa- the payment is more. But, yeah, he can bring a little more, but he has a team of people that will bring a little more, too, so. Um, and I, it's just a thought, nobody has, we don't have to decide tomorrow, but we have to have a meeting this month. We didn't have one last month, because, I mean, I don't know how to do that meeting.
That includes him being the city planner and everything?
Yes, yeah, he'll look at, he'll look at the plans, he'll be able to tell you whether, uh, those are, the ordinances are right, the regulations are right. Is that correctly what he said, Brandon? Yeah, he'll be able to tell us if we're heading in the right direction, keep us out of, you know, trouble. Um, he's very educational in that area.
So you're getting more money for the bucks with this one, so to speak.
Well, I mean, you know, J- Jim's been here with y'all this whole time with experience, so y'all know, uh, all about that, so I'm just saying you have to.
You get more resources with that.
That's right, resources.
Probably more, you know, but.
Yeah.
Resources, that's correct, I, I didn't say it right, but resources, you can. So, um, and I, I, I can't remember how many, how long he said he's been with over at Bolivar, and also Henderson, so he's, you know, just.
So, this guy's helping Oliver with theirs?
Yes, that's correct. And like I said, it's just a thought, I wanted to bring it up, and he can come and talk to y'all if y'all like for him to.
Issue, that should be more beneficial to that, and those comes up. I'll go get more bells and whistles there if you needed it.
I mean, they'll know about things, but of course, sometimes we'll know about them, and they'll be able to guide us in the right direction to help move our town forward. That's what I was, I guess I can say. And, uh, Alderman Austin said he thought it would be nice if he would come talk with y'all, and, and I can do that at the next one. So, if you don't want to do it tomorrow, I'm just trying to throw things out that I just wanted to know.
Get him to come.
Try the next time, okay, I'll get him to come, and.
That good with you?
Yeah.
You can talk to us.
And he can come, uh, on the twenty-ninth, if you'd like for him to come on the twenty-ninth, when you, we discuss the budget.
I think we can only do the.
Okay, all right, so I'm learning, all right, sorry. All right, so I'll get, I'll reach out to him for that. Anything else on that? Okay. The next one was, um, uh, did y'all want to discuss on the McNary County, uh, West Tennessee EMS service for that amount? Did y'all want to have any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, like I said before, I mean, we, that's like double tax money, getting back to them.
What did the other municipalities do on that? Are they still counseling them?
I don't think Adamso did anything, I checked on that, and, but, but nobody's done anything so far. Only one that paid it was the county.
Yeah, I don't agree with.
And I'm gonna go to their, I'm gonna go to their meeting after we leave here, so I can say exactly.
Our, our citizens pay county taxes and city taxes.
Right.
I don't agree with no double taxing.
Can we go ahead and just put that on there for tomorrow for y'all? All right, uh, next is, um, did y'all want to do any kind of donation on the mural that was, uh, presented down on True Savers Hardware for Arts in McNary? Any thoughts on that?
That's what I was, do you have any idea?
What we did on the other previous year? I don't, I don't remember us doing anything on that one, but that.
I didn't see anything, and, uh, I looked through the whole budget just seeing, I didn't see anything on the murals. I see where you gave, you know, you give to Arts in McNary, uh.
I know we give liberal to them, so.
You get, and, and enough this past year.
I don't mind helping some, I know it was, um, expensive, and it's, it's really nice now, um, so, I mean, I think they'll be appreciative of any little amount we decide on.
So what did y'all, what did y'all decide on? Is that something on the table, or you think that, or?
Just gonna think about it, make a amount.
Tomorrow, my question for now, all right, good, that's good.
Check back and see in the past if you find any history of getting this in, too.
I think we have, but I can't remember.
I can't.
We're just talking about it.
Okay. Uh, and then, of course, tomorrow we'll have to approve a package liquor for, um, summer tobacco beverage, so that'll go into the beer.
Is that down there across from? That's one more.
Yes, absolutely, he's very excited about that, and the building looks fabulous, the way they make that up, you know. And, uh, since we got Pat Landers up, if y'all wanted to talk about, I know you got an email from Dr. Barts, and Dr. Barts, did you want to speak? Where are you, Dr. Barts? Did you wanna speak on anything tonight?
Well, I think several people understand that coming back into Selmer, you can definitely see that there is some issues with any, they're not even streets, these are alleys. And they are, this is very confusing, when I even have family that come in, do not know which way to enter, which way to turn. Um, some alleys are larger, and then they taper to go smaller. And I think you are at a high liability rate, and that's why I emailed everybody at this, because I think, uh, number one, having a physician come into your county brings three million dollars each physician each year. Whether we do CDLs, whether we see other people, that's a lot of revenue. And I've rented the building from Keith Ellis, and he has definitely made sure that I need parking just like he would. So there's been some issues of people parking on that, and hopefully that will be enforced. Uh, Terry Abernant, he is a lawyer for him, and another lawyer there, Ian Jackson. I'm not the one that's going to be the one enforcing that, if he wants to put cameras and do that type of thing. What I have a problem is, when you walk, drive down any of the alleys, I myself get confused which is a one-way, which is a one-way, which way you go, and normal city ordinances show where you normally have to have this side you can park, this side you cannot. Well, we've got signs on different properties that it's not managed, and there's not even arrows on the road that say one-way, this-way. People don't know, and you're going to have people hit each other. If we want growth in the downtown area, you need to have it mapped out. And I think for the board later on, you need to look at more public parking versus parks or something. You've got to have places for customers to park, or they're not gonna use your name in town. I think, uh, Mr. Hartman discussed about some of the road sizes and alley sizes, and that's what confused me, they weren't named.
I got some measurements today, before this gets to the State Farm Marshal's office and I get a call. This is, this would be my recommendation. Don't know how well it's gonna go over, but when Choos is burned down, four, five years ago, we couldn't get a ladder truck nowhere close, we had four ladder trucks, we had tires, and savannas on the front street, shoot water in, with Hardin County, and Bolivars on the back streets to shoot water across. The four alleyways that I have marked off in red are thirteen feet wide. You figure a four truck's eight with two mirrors, which is two feet on each side, it's twelve feet. So like I said, before this gets to the State Farm Marshal's office and them calling me, why are people parking there? I've started working on this, cause I figure it's gonna work.
Can you give one to Ray and Chief Hall? Could you give one to Ray and Chief Hall? I know that we went down there and put the one-way sign up, uh, coming in, right by rumor has it, we did put the one-way.
But you did not put a sign on rumor has it side that said.
Yes, we hadn't got one yet, we had, we had ordered.
But is there not a city ordinance for Tennessee, how many feet you should have where it says no park?
That's what we were looking into, that's what we were looking into, to make sure, cause I did pull up the ordinances, and so did, uh, Brandon Vaughn, our new building inspector, and so did our, uh, recorder, uh, Ms. Henderson, and we really don't have anything, unless you guys can remember anything, uh, Mr. Finnison, about the alleys. And, uh, so everything is basically talking about, um, you know, you got two-hour parking on the front, and then you got first come, first served on your sides. Um, there wasn't really, uh, ordinance in place for the alleys.
How wide does it have to be to be considered a two-way street?
Eighteen, I think, Ray?
No, I, I think it's eleven foot per side, which is twenty-two, and then two foot for shoulder.
Yeah, but it's a secondary rep, not a little bit smaller, I was thinking it was a little smaller.
Well, I believe it was eleven, but I can check if that's.
Okay. And see, well, a lot of people, and I noticed it this morning, on the alleyway coming by Jessica's husband's building, there's air conditioning unit hanging up off the top of the building, that air conditioning unit's getting ready to fall. You get on the other side of the street, you got two air conditioners on the back of the building. Really, it would enlighten y'all, just drive through them four alleys and just look at everything that's in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've gone there a long time, because. Well, after didn't find any ordinance, I, I, you know, all I did was consult with other people and just say, so, thank you for doing this, and this is, this is great.
I just think for the citizens to at least put arrows that are physically on the alley street, beside the signs, that would make a big difference, just like we did at the hospital. A yellow line goes to the lab on the, on the ground, you can't get lost on the yellow brick road. Same thing with this, you're going to have yourself a huge liability. Dr. Ellis has already pushed his hands up, I'm just the least seen, but I can definitely see people coming out, not knowing which way, and there's gonna be T-bones, there's gonna be hitting, on hit, and it's falling on there, it's been given every single email by him, and I don't wanna see our city get into a major legal issue, but it falls on the liability of the city.
And then we have the other businesses that are saying also that they have to have a place to park when they come to work. Like rumor has it, on the side, you know, they tried to hug the wall, and I have went through, but my car is little, and I do get, I understand, you know, if you had to have a fire truck or somebody going down through there. So I get those, and then Jesus cares, where do we park? Cause we've always parked on the side and the back. Then you got, well, you can go say Terry Evernant, you know, he parks in the alley as well, and so does his secretary. So we've got a lot of parking in places, we just got, and, you know, we are growing, and thank you, you know, Dr. Barts for coming to our downtown and everybody else. We are growing, so this is a, a good problem, but then, you know, it's something we've gotta face and make decisions on how to make it safe, and, and do the right thing. So this is, you know, this is a starting point, but.
Oh, I just need to come up with a plan, see.
Does, do people that own that, uh, station have, have, own all the way down where they can possibly say they can take that parking away from across from Lyra's Cafe? They own that property?
Yes, yes, I, I called and I talked to that owner of that, uh, he wants to separate it, you know, cause I did ask about that. I am meeting with Keith, uh, is it Keith Freeman?
They do it, the Selmer sign there, past the gravel, where it's actually gravel and it goes to green space, there's a little sign that says Selmer, from there back is railroad.
Right, but right behind the depot, right there, where usually everybody's parking, that is, goes with the owner of that.
But then you're talking also, I'm sorry to interrupt, but then you're also talking in these alleys, that it's gonna become a bigger problem with the town of Selmer, because majority of these buildings in downtown Selmer are zero lot line. That means where their walls end, that's it, so that's gonna go into the sidewalk issues in the alleys and everything else that's been there for, they've been there longer than I've been alive. And so it's gonna open up a whole lot.
Oh, no, cause you do have people that park there, and we did zone some to live up top. Uh, so, um, there is a lot of things we'll have to put this on the table and really come around and think of, put our heads together. Um, but there was something else I was gonna say, and I then forgot it, um. Um, but there was something else I was gonna say, and I then forgot it, um...
I know I went in a dead-end street, that it wasn't no dead-end sign, and I was lucky to get out. I mean, 'cause when I ended at the end, I had to make sure I didn't hit two dogs, a man, a cat, and a chicken over here to try to turn around, but it wasn't, and Ray, I'll show it to you, it's not a dead-end sign there, for you to know, hey, it's dead-end.
It was, somebody stole it.
It probably was, they do steal it, but we need to put something back there, 'cause you get in there, you can't get out, you got something being...
I'm glad you did that one.
I'm glad I did too.
It, it's Keith Freeman, I'm gonna meet with him, because he, you know, he has some ideas about downtown parking, and I guess him and Brooke may own some land, I don't know, but anyway, I'm gonna make him...
On the railroad land over by, behind the depot is theirs for a little spot, and then there's a big spot that the railroad owns.
Okay.
Would they allow us to turn in?
I don't know, I can email the, the email.
Try to figure out, you're running, and talk to them and see if we can, uh...
I'll let Brandon, I'll let Brandon.
Use it, 'cause that would be a ton of parking there.
This alley, and I'm getting ready to have twenty-five cars in, we are going to have twenty-five people at least throughout the day, go in and out of that area, start with that alley, get it one-way.
Well, getting, getting, getting the parking farther away gives all those other people that are in your way, out of there.
But it's not marked.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, that alley itself on the ground does not have arrows to know where you go to turn left, right, forward. Nobody has any clue when they come in, you go, where do I pull in? Is this the right way to go in?
Well, may I ask, let Ray tell you one thing about Ray, did you wanna tell you about your idea that you just kinda thought of, or you were not saying anything about that at all?
Well, when, when this started to rising a week, week and a half ago or something, um, you know, there's a way to alleviate the problem is, um, and I talked to Dr. Barts about it, is to go to the state of Tennessee and get a driveway permit, which cuts, which would put a driveway into the parking lot that Dr. Barts is, is doing now.
And the state laughed at that and said, that's absolutely ridiculous, they have nothing to do when it comes to a state, when it comes to a city road. They will only deal with highways.
This is not a city road.
And Harvey Neil Smith also said, that is absolutely ridiculous, my patients will be parking from the alley and going out.
And, and...
Why should I incur all...
Anyway, um, the point I was making is, make your own driveway, keep the people off of the alley, put a curb line up there around his parking, and it alleviates all the issues. Now, it is a state road, so I don't know why the DOT would, I mean, if we were to cut a driveway apron onto that road, DOT would be breathing down my neck, and why are you doing this on a, now, true, this state road within the city limits is maintained by the city of Selmer, and I've got no problem there, you know, doing what needs to be done to maintain it. Um, but in order to put a, a driveway in on a state road, there's certain criteria that needs to be made.
A driveway on a road?
See, that, that, there, there, that's, that's the key, right there. And I've got, I've got no problem, you will have access through the alleyway, and that's fine, that's no problem, and we'll do what this board decides to do. But to alleviate the issue of somebody parking in a spot, or, or somebody causing, uh, uh, traffic jam, or not knowing what to do when you meet somebody in the alley, I mean, I just did it the other day, I turned off, the other car went around, nobody got T-boned, and we worked it. Um, but I'm here to work for the board, you know, the board wants to come up with a design, I'll put all the arrows you want, I've got no problem there. I'm just saying to alleviate this situation, if that building, and it has plenty of room for it, if that building had its own driveway, then it takes care of the situation that we're going through now.
Yeah, we'll just definitely have to go to...
So, I mean, that, that's all I'm saying, whatever, whatever the, you know, the, the council does is, you know, I will, um, you know, those signs, no parking signs, park on this side of the, the alley only, those have been put up through the years by my department. Um, we don't find any information, you know, we just stuck a sign where somebody wanted to, to stick a sign, so everybody would be parking on one side. Um, again, I'll do what, whatever wants to be done, but to alleviate a situation, and I know it's an expense, and, um, you know, but doing business occurs expenses, and, um, and that would just give you your own parking, you're, you won't have any issues with people parking on your lot. And it seems like it's always gonna be an issue, whether it's First Friday, or whether it's somebody that comes in the wrong direction, and they gotta open the driver's side door instead of, you know, being pointed the right direction, it's just always gonna be an issue. But again, I will vote, you know, I will do anything this board, you know, decides to do. I'm just giving alternatives.
Um, yes, I understood, thank you for that, thank you for that, okay.
Discuss and discuss and discuss and discuss problems, you don't need to discuss problems, you need to discuss solutions. These solutions, okay? Now, what he's suggesting makes all kind of sense and not expensive. You know what I'm saying, putting in drives and do all this, it's gonna, it's gonna cost money. We said, we talking about trying to give our city people raises, and talking about how to generate revenue, we ain't trying to put out a bunch of money. Hey, we want quick fix, we want something simple that makes sense, just listen to what he's saying, it makes sense.
Most towns, you're not able to pull out from the avenue on the main road anyway.
And like John was saying, like...
Pull out Houston instead of Court.
Like John said, you know, looking for places that we can use for parking, you know what I'm saying? Those are solutions, we don't need to keep talking about the problem, we know what the problem is, we, we need solutions. Because if we, if we don't tackle the solution, we're just gonna keep having problems.
We're gonna find a solution for this, for sure, so, any thoughts on that, Alderman?
I think we need to do it soon as possible, not kick it down the road for a long time.
And putting arrows in is something quick you can do right away, makes sense, people won't be having regrets.
Put together some type of plans, like, park on this side, don't park on this side, and this is the way in, this is the way out, and...
I know Ray is...
It's an alley, you're gonna go in and out.
Right, I know Ray is putting a, with one-way sign on...
Turn off the main road and go out the other end, and then...
It sounds simple to me, and you, you don't go this way, you go this way.
Well, Ray is putting on the other end of the, the alley, when you go straight through, he's putting something on the road on that side.
We just need some guidance, we just need some guidance by this board, because, because I can't, I was gonna do it, I was gonna start making a application today, um, but we gotta decide, you know, is it gonna go from, from, uh, Court Avenue to Houston through one-way direction, are we gonna, you know?
I think that's the way it needs to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so you can pull out on the other end.
Yeah.
You're gonna be pulling out West Court, you need to go out...
You can go out the other way, go from the main road and go this way, and then you have to figure out which way you wanna go.
But we just have to decide what we wanna do.
Yeah, have somebody have to make a, like, a map and, and do...
Yeah, everything can come in from West Court and go out on Houston.
Yeah.
And I agree that we need all, all of them to go that way.
Yeah.
Not be all of them.
I mean, I mean, you know, there's that other alley that crosses that way.
You just pick a direction and it'll go.
Right.
And all of them go the same way.
Right.
Those are gonna have to come from, uh, is it Third? Third down towards Front.
Yeah, that works.
We can do that.
We can do that, that's them.
It already is one-way on, from Third to Front.
Yeah, it, it is, there's no question about it, um, coming from the Regent's Bank site, there's a one-way sign there, but there's not a one-way sign on the other end.
No, they're not in there.
Yeah, people are...
Just need a sign on both ends that are in the road and, and go from there, and it should alleviate most of it.
Appreciate that, young man.
Be able to vote on that tomorrow for that part, just that, that...
I don't know if that's something we have to vote on, I mean, I think it's just a, just a...
Just get it down.
Street, go out there and mark everything the way it should be and, and go from there.
Okay, you heard that? Okay, he's got it, alright. Anything else on that?
No. Clarification question, uh, so the budget we're voting on tomorrow is the one that John was in it?
Yeah, I don't know if that needs to be ten percent.
Well...
She's gonna put us some samples in.
Well, but, okay, so the original budget, we were giving with the two percent, does it have the property tax?
It has no property tax, please.
So that's something to discuss.
So, the initial budget can be read, you can have your first reading.
Okay, and then we can figure what we need to do before...
Between the second reading, yeah.
Okay.
That way we stay on schedule and stay out of trouble with the state.
Gotcha.
Just a question, um, I'll get the arrows to put down on the asphalt, like the railroad crossing sign that actually adhered to the asphalt. Are we doing anything with parking yet? Is there no parking in alleys, do I put up signs, do I? How, how, uh...
I think we better, we better have...
Well, that's my suggestion.
Why would you park in that alley anymore? Why, why you blocking it?
We could let them take that mark there, so, we might not have...
It's not right, it's been that way, but like, nothing against Terry, but in that alley, and the other alleys, if you say you can't park in that alley, you just gonna have to do fine with everybody, if you can't park in that.
That's, that's...
You either gonna do it, or you ain't gonna do it.
That's a clarification, now, we can put up the arrows and then deal with signage later, that's entirely up to you guys, but I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing.
You can't tell this person, he can park in that alley and she can't, then we gotta try.
Terry, 'cause his business faces alley.
If we, if we can't...
Yeah. That's right.
Well, if we can't get a fire truck down there...
It ain't doing good, that's right. Building burned down, you wanna, what about that?
Alright, anything else?
Do we have an answer?
Yeah, just mark them all one-way, no parking.
All one-way, no parking for that.
Can I be consistent?
Can I comment on that? We can mark them no parking, but I don't think there's no ordinance to back up the sign and put in no parking.
That is true, because when I looked, I, I, like I told y'all, the alleys did not have anything.
Can't park in the roadway, 'cause you'd be blocking the road.
So if you're parking in that alley, you're blocking the road?
You can't park in the front, 'cause it's two alleys.
There's no ordinance.
Park on the side, where they're gonna go. So there's not the other...
So what do we need to do?
Uh, so, in my argument, without having to make creative ordinance, if I go out there and park in the middle of the street, I can have...
I tow it.
So...
'Cause you're, there, there wouldn't be a law if you're parking in the middle of the road, but...
But that's, the alley is, is in a...
It's an alley, no, it's an alley.
It's an alley.
It's an alley. It's an alley.
So ain't no way of correcting it, and if he can't get there to put the car out?
We gotta have, we gotta have a law to back this, if we put the sign, we gotta have a law to back the sign.
You can do the arrows, but the other...
But if we put a sign, we gotta have a law to back the sign, if you, if you want me to enforce the law.
Can you enforce the law?
If we got a law to enforce.
Were you checking into that?
We don't have a law to, we don't have a law to enforce in the alley.
Write up an ordinance, still.
Can we write up one?
Y'all can't, I can't.
She gonna write up one, okay. You gonna back us up, ain't ya?
I wanna tell you, I'm trying to land one, I guess.
This gets to the State Farm Marshal's office.
If you wanna go there, we can, but...
Do you have a fire line?
No, I won't know how to...
You're gonna make one, the state laws will supersede, the city ordinances, county resolution.
I just don't want us to put up a sign and then people calling us, saying, why are y'all not enforcing this?
We're gonna get impasse, if you doesn't got an ordinance, we'll go from there.
We, we don't care what we have to do, we just don't wanna get hung in the middle of it, but not doing it.
I understand that more than you.
Okay, anything else?
Because I actually thought of the fire, fire truck, you don't need them to be, we didn't need...
Okay, Miss Taylor just wanted to speak real quick on something, go ahead.
Everybody here knows me, and everybody knows that my husband passed here earlier this year. My girls came up with an ideal for a balloon release in remembrance of their father. I came up with the idea of inviting the host city, or the counties, whoever would like to participate with us, if I could get the board and the mayor to approve of it. I know that there's a regulation with the biodegradable balloons. I will furnish all the balloons, up to two hundred, and helium to fill them with. When I was looking online to look at these balloons, I found we could specify them, we can get them specific, we can get them different colors, we can get sayings on them, whatever we want. I think if we got them all one color, that would help eliminate anybody sneaking in the balloons that aren't biodegradable and releasing them with us. And in lieu of giving money to buy these balloons from me, I would like to set up a box, and maybe get a couple of canned goods, and at the end of it, we can donate the canned goods to the soup pantry. I'd like to do this sometime in first of August, and if everything goes okay, I'd like to make this a yearly event. It doesn't matter if your loved one has been passed a year, five years, ten years, if you just wanna remember that loved one, and maybe get together once a year, we can release the balloons.
Do I, do I think that probably, as the board would say, that you would probably just need to write up something for, to bring to the board, so they can have it?
I could do that.
That's like a good idea.
Thank y'all.
Okay, um, I guess that's it, does anybody have anything else? John? Oh, I do wanna have second, second thing, I'm sorry, I wanna say thank you, the rockabilly went well, and it was very safe, and everything was safe, and I was just so excited about that, I was just wanna say thank you to Chief Hall, and Chief Carr, all the workers, everybody that was, I mean, they worked hard, Ted Roberts, wherever he's at, I mean, they were everywhere, looking, making sure that we were safe, so. Alright, maybe John?